Moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Over to you, sir.
Well, we open with a word of prayer. Well, I gotta just thank you that we can come together as leaders in the community, that our boards can meet, and we can learn to collaborate together, and that we can serve our citizens of the county the best to our ability. Amen.
Amen.
That was good.
Mr. Wooster, let's go through the formality, sir, if we can get the agenda approved.
All right, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agenda for open session as presented.
Motion in second, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Colick?
Yes.
Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mrs. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Wooster?
Yes.
And Mr. Marsh?
Yes, motion passes.
All right, welcome. It's October 7th. We are in Central Office for a joint Board of Supervisors School Board meeting. It's good to get everybody together. Thanks to do a little collaboration, as Mr. Rosie alluded to in his prayer. Get right to it. Don't have any words of wisdom to start off. I know you guys have been here since early this morning. It's over to you, sir.
Start with your agenda.
Okay. Let's roll right into it. First item on the agenda is Westside Elementary School replacement.
Thank you, Chair. Marsh, I think the school division is going to lead that particular agenda, and I am going to ask Dr. Coleman if he will be prepared to present.
Thank you, Board Chair. Marsh, Board Chair, Rosie, and Dr. Kramer. I'm gonna start off with a history of Westside Elementary School. Just a brief history. These are some of the dates that we want to discuss with the infrastructure of the school moving forward. So, starting back in 1928, original eight-room brick Alawite County Training School. 1935, a project noted for the campus as an archive project. 1941, Smithfield Training, all the way to 1945. 1960, was renamed Westside High School. 1969, Division Integration, campus converted to Smithfield Elementary School. 2005, re-designated as Westside Elementary School, following the opening of Smithfield Middle School. In 2022 to '25, the capital planning and state grant pursuant for major renovation and replacement. So, we first wanted to take a brief history on Westside and all of the many areas that it covered over the years. At this time, the original front portion of Westside, the front area, is close to 100 years old at this time. Now, I'd like to run right into the video. What you'll see is the principal, Mr. Matt Johnson, and Westside, and some of the issues that we've been having over the years, and then we're gonna go back to it and address it with a little bit more detail. But, the first impact of what does the kid see every day, what does the principal see every day, and what is the conversation at Central Office concerning how to, what direction we're gonna be moving in? Right here.
Hello, everybody. Mr. Johnson, the principal here at Westside Elementary School. I just want to take you through Westside, kinda highlight some areas of concerns that we're having for Westside, and why Westside should be a consideration for a new school building soon. This is one of our areas of concern. It's one of our high-traffic hallways that takes us from the front office to other areas of the building. And as you can see, when it rains at Westside, this is what a lot of our hallways actually look like. We have to put a lot of caution signs, a lot of buckets to collect water, and it really becomes a hazard for students and teachers and staff as they are maneuvering around our building. It's a big safety concern here at Westside. Another thing, as you can see, is that our ceiling tiles constantly are being damaged. We constantly have to replace them on there. Even our paneling along the sides keep peeling off, and we have to constantly glue them on. Our tiles are always coming up and resurfacing and having to put more down on there, so it's a constant investment that we're having to put into Westside to keep it looking good. One area of concern is our restrooms at Westside. They're very outdated. As you can see, we have invested money into trying to update them a little bit, but there's a lot of plumbing concerns. A lot of times, we have to close urinals or toilets because they just don't flush, or a lot of things will leak. And a lot of times, when you stand in here, you can just smell the smell of a bathroom. The urine is just stuck in here that we cannot seem to get rid of it. As you can see, this is one of our restrooms. We do have it closed out of order that we have made marked to be unsafe at the time due to water just constantly coming down inside the bathroom. And a result, these students now are having to travel a far distance to be able to get to another restroom, which is now impacting the learning that they are earning that day. As you can see behind me, we have a lot of peeling of the paint that constantly occurs here at Westside, not just only here in the gymnasium, but throughout our building. A lot of it sometimes is just because of the age of the building, sometimes it's because of water damage that happens. Oftentimes, this space right here and other areas within our building are actually rented out through our community, and so our community uses this space, and this is, you know, the representation that we are sharing with our community about Alawite County Schools and Westside. As you can see, some of our issues here at Westside are not just in the hallways. It also trickles into a lot of our classrooms. As you can see in one of our classrooms right here, when it does rain, we have a lot of water, and it hasn't rained for days, and we even still have water that's dripping out of there. And even some of our classrooms have to now just put rugs over our tiles that's not cost-effective anymore for. So, a lot of our tiles are actually just buckling up and buoying up on there, and we just now just kinda cover them up. When this does happen in the classroom, it quietly disrupts the learning that takes place. A lot of times, students sometimes have water that may drip on them. We sometimes have to rearrange the classroom to be able to get around that space. If it gets so bad, even sometimes we even have to move classes somewhere else within our building for that day. Our classrooms are very full already to capacity, and so taking a classroom and moving into another classroom maybe available, sometimes even a smaller room, and so that makes even more of a challenge. As you can see in the classrooms, they're so tight that there's no room for students to put their supplies, their backpacks, or oftentimes having to stack them on the side, which becomes a safety concern when people are trying to move around the classroom as well in the building. So, as you can see, there are a lot of immediate pressing concerns here at Westside from the water that's constantly leaking, our roof, it's a lot of health and safety issues. We do our best here at Westside to mask these issues, but they're going to be a constant that's always gonna happen and reoccur, that we need to take immediate action now and address it and move forward with a new Westside.
All right, thank you for your attention to that.
Before you proceed, Dr. Coleman, I would like to thank both Principal Matt Johnson as well as Mr. Elliott for putting that together. I think it's also important to note that despite what you saw, the school division has been doing some work there years prior, as well as currently, there are some things that we've been doing. So, as concerning as that is, that video shares some of the concerns that we are addressing and that the students and staff are confronting daily, I will ask Dr. Coleman to share some of the upgrades that have been made over the years.
All right, thank you there, Dr. Kramer. All right, over the last several years, things of the nature of sewer lines, main line, have costs associated with this, $14,000 approximately. Cafeteria HVAC reheat valves, $8,000. Chiller boiler for the second phase in the new wing, $38,000. Drainage project in the rear of the school, and I'm just gonna discuss that just a little while. Before, two or three years ago, any teacher at Westside could tell you that the back hall would flood every single time it rained. So, we had to do a $52,000 overhaul grading drainage project in order to ensure that that didn't occur anymore. Of course, the cafeteria repair, there was $70,000 to repair the entire cafeteria. Let's go down. STEM lab chiller, the gym HVAC repair, one was $30,000, the other $20,000. The boiler, one phase boiler, second phase, $4,000 each. And let's just go into the mold reports for clearance for the STEM lab, the different areas of the school, $3,000 each, every single time that a doctor calls in and said that we have to have the air quality tested in their room. The painting, the partitions, although we have started repairing restrooms, different things of that nature, it's gonna cause close to $10,000 per boys' side, girls' side of those restrooms. $20,000 altogether. We already have estimated it out. There are three community restrooms, so to say, the bigger restrooms, three to four in Westside, which is gonna come to concern about $80,000 in order to replace those and other things. Similar to the way we did Carisville earlier this year. Now, once again, the sewer line repair, another $10,000 for that, and on and on. And I have a lot of different data based off of Westside and the amount of money that we're spending. The biggest thing I wanted to emphasize about Westside, and I know a couple of board members have already talked to us about it, the sewer line for Westside has exploded twice. And when I use the term exploded, it has blown. It's an old pipe, the clay pipe, what is it called?
Terracotta.
Terracotta, thank you. It's a terracotta pipe. Now, the pipe runs from the makerspace room all the way to the gym. It runs underground under the whole entire school. The pipe is approximately maybe six to 10 feet underground under the entire school. When that pipe bursts, we have to bring in a crew, and we have to dig down, find where the pipe burst at, and we have to fix it. At any time, the pipe has burst twice, we have been lucky, and the pipe has burst in the courtyard. So, every time the pipe's burst in the courtyard, we can have machinery equipment to go in and fix it. If that pipe should burst under the school, under the terrazzo floors, and we have to dig down, we are literally gonna have to shut the school down for quite some time. Depending upon what the Health Department states about how we have to cordon off the whole scenario, it can get into something that's a lot deeper. So, I have those pictures, I have the recommendations and everything for the, I guess, the repairs that we did on that particular site. So, I just wanted to make sure that we pointed that out, we're talking about the sewer lines. $14,000 repair, but it's a lot larger than that, just overall. Sorry, any questions?
Yeah, before we move forward, are there any questions? Sorry, Dr. Coleman.
Yes. Do you have, you said you got a stack. Do you know what the costs to date are in terms of repair?
The rough estimates that I have right now in the last two to three years is going to be, is gonna be roughly about $800,000 to $900,000. Now, Ms. Gatz just made sure she pointed out something to me that I have on the list, but I did forget to mention, the roof. The roof at Westside. Years ago, I think it was four years ago, three to four years ago, we received the estimate on repairing the roof, and that was gonna be $1.7 million. And if you remember, in the last several CIPs, it was located on there as $1.7 million. Now, with escalation, price escalation across the board, materials escalation, that is coming in at $4.5 million at this time, and that is a complete roof replacement. Dr. Kramer and myself, we sat down, we're working with some of the contractors, just trying to get more of a phased approach for this, but at the same time, overall, that $1.7 now was $4.5, which will be sent out as a RFP if that time has come. But, the roof and fixing those issues of the roof, of course, what you're seeing in the video, we're constantly trying to patch that, we're constantly trying to do our fixes that we can, but overall, Westside needs a new roof, and that's the cost of the going roof at this time.
Okay, so you take the $4.5 estimated million for the roof, and as you've been looking at the projection of other repairs, what would be your total repair cost if you had to just repair it, including the roof estimated anyway?
And if you're saying repair it just to get it up and running, or you're talking about repair it to keep it for another 20, 30 years?
Twenty-some years.
Then I would rip out the sewer line, I would put the new sewer line in, I would replace all of the plumbing. So, once again, we're looking at probably about $40 million. We're looking at $40 million to $50 million, and that's just me telling you, that's how much it was gonna cost if we built it right there, right there, same footprint.
Are you asking?
Not even going, I apologize.
No, no, I just want to be clear. Are you asking about total renovation of that school, or are you asking about a new building?
I'm talking about bringing that building up to date.
I think before we could respond further, I would like to get a professional estimate of what that would be. So, I would hasten to venture a guess without...
So, if I may, in 2018 or so, the discussion of replacing Hardy came up, and y'all had done an assessment of the facilities, and the Board of Supervisors paid or joined y'all in another assessment. At the time, I was a proponent of Westside because having attended there, having concerns, and I think we looked at what we called the bones of both facilities. Do we have that report that we could get a copy of? Because that was only a handful of years ago, and identified things like the roof on this school, identified, because if you remember, then the superintendent was proposing to renovate the front of that school as well as this one. So, I'd like to see that report. I don't know where if we could find that, Don, or if that would be in there, but it would be helpful.
Can we give an estimate, so roughly what year?
2018, because it was just prior before we did the Hardy.
It might have been a little bit earlier than that.
I got on board in 2016, so. Mr. Grace would be able to speak to that, too. 2018, you think?
Around that time.
It would be interesting to see what they said about it, because I'd be disappointed if they missed something in that.
Well, if memory serves me correctly, it was determined at that point that renovation was not cost-effective on those buildings.
There was a scale that was given to us, and that's why this one scored, Hardy scored differently than Westside. The scoring's not really, I'm just, it gave a report on things like roofing, plumbing, et cetera. And I think that would help us as a group come up with what to do next. And the reason being is, we just had our meeting where we discussed potentially using that building for other things after it's no longer a school, so the investment wouldn't just be to put a Band-Aid on something, it might be an investment that would help our community, and that report would help speak to whether or not that's a wise investment.
And could I say finally, just to Mr. Rosie, in your question to repair what we have right there, even if we did renovate what we had right there, as you've seen in the video with the classroom sizes, the classroom sizes would still be the same if we renovated everything from that set. So, it still wouldn't work as a Hardy Elementary School. I have a presentation I'm gonna do for the board on Thursday night that goes into the differences between what you see at Hardy and what you've just seen at Westside. Gigantic difference in terms of instruction, in terms of what needs to roll out. So, just wanted to make sure I did that.
No, appreciate it. We're all about getting some of the data, you know, and if we've got bad bones and we can't do anything with it, you know, you don't want to put good money on a bad project. But, this is how we get educated.
If I may, I saw the video. Is it safe to assume what we saw in the video has been repaired, so with the storm coming up this week, we're gonna deal with the same issue in those same spots?
I think, Dr. Coleman...
I know it's more of an issue than those spots, but one would think, because we've got it, even if we were gonna pull the trigger on building the new Westside tomorrow, you're not gonna be in it tomorrow. It'll take some time.
But I think, as you mentioned, the cost of a new roof is $4.5 million, so we would need to replace that. We're having discussions...
But it hasn't been repaired, is what I'm getting. There's places that there's been no...
It's still leaking.
No, sir. It still will be leaking. We covered the biggest spots that we could, but it still will be leaking. There's no way that we can clog all of those holes, that all of those issues that Westside roof is having at this time. We have an official report, expert report, as Jessica stated, and it goes into detail, every single section of that roof, exactly what's wrong with it.
You know, we're looking at to defray the cost at a phased-in approach. Obviously, we have $4 million to replace the entire roof, so how do we phase in an approach where we can focus on some of the more significant areas where the classrooms are? Looking at that, but no, it's, we're just patching at best.
Very good. Okay.
So, it seems like, and I know Mr. Akry and those folks that have been here longer than I, who've been talking about Westside for certainly long before I was on the school board, one of the things on the school board's agenda for Thursday, I believe Dr. Kramer's gonna present to the school board and ask us to give him the green light to go ahead and do some architectural design, initial cost estimates on replacement school. And I think, assuming the school board has the appetite to bless that, which shouldn't cost us anything upfront, that initial ask, I think, is cost-free because we're under contract with RRMM. But, at least we have some numbers that we can give to the Board of Supervisors, say, "Look, this is what we're looking at for a cost," and then we can look at that report that you mentioned about 2018. It's obvious that we're gonna have to put some degree of money...
Just to keep it going.
Just to keep it going. It's like a car with ball tires, right? So, we're gonna do something to it. I think that's a separate conversation, and if you guys are exploring alternatives for maybe that building's future, it's certainly all tied together.
Absolutely. So, with this being the priority of the board, which I, again, I can't say enough, I agree with, with this becoming this year's priority, does this mean things like the school bus garage will be pushed back so that we can make, if this is made a priority? I mean, money's money, right? I mean, and leaking roofs, I hate that mechanics have to have the door open when it's cold outside, but I hate even more that our students have to move into classrooms because we have water, you know, just falling out of the ceilings and stuff. So, maybe that's not something you can answer this evening, but that's...
So, I don't want to speak on behalf of the whole board. I mean, we did our prioritized list, and there's certainly, you know, everybody's got their own ideas on that. I do think, and someone, keep me honest here, I think the board would agree that money is money, and if the Board of Supervisors were able to get money for one project vice another, like the band room, you know, no one's gonna snub their nose or turn it down. I think they're all needs.
But, I mean, I just make sure we're focused all on the same priority, because everything needs to be a number-one priority, right?
That's correct.
Okay, just clarification.
If I may also ask in regard to that, you said you have someone that will do a partial or something on your architectural services. And as you move forward and you're looking for architectural services, are you gonna do an RFP so that there's an open bid for others to bid on the project?
I'll let Superintendent speak to that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Correct, that's right. It would have to be a fair, open bid process, yes.
And, Dr. Kramer, just wrapping up, what was asked of me is to provide the timeline for a new Hardy, or now Hardy. What you see on that projector is the timeline that we followed. This was after we chose, what Mr. Rosie was just going to, after we had the architect onboard, that's when we started this, the process. This is the timeline that it took from October 23rd, 29th, this is exactly what occurred. This is what was presented to the school board before we went on. So, if you can just take a little time to review that, because that is the timeframe that we're looking at. So, even if everything was funded tomorrow, this is what we're looking at, so we need to move forward. And that's why it's important that we get the architect onboard, as Mr. Rosie has just pointed out.
Does your timeline, do we have the timeline that would also incorporate the public hearing that we did for that? I mean, it gives the full picture?
Not at all. I can add that, the front portion of that, absolutely.
It shows the public hearing, and it kinda shows it all the way through.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, everyone can see how this is a 24-month to a 30-month process. It's just not instantaneous.
Right, absolutely.
So, if you could, Thursday comes before us, maybe update your timeline if it was passed and moved forward, what that would look like, if we'd refresh it, that'd be nice.
Any other comments on Westside?
I have one question. Could you speak some on the existing capacity of Westside and what a proposed replacement would?
The, what is the, the population at this time? Okay.
I think it's, I think it's fair to say, and I don't want to step on your thunder, Dr. Coleman, but I think it's, the whole agenda here is, it's certainly all tied together, right? And personally, I'm really glad that we're all sitting around the same table tonight. So, for months, we've been working on, I should say, we, Mrs. Briggs has been working on one of our agenda items, which is the capacity spreadsheet. Couple, two, three months ago, we put together a regulation, and I think everybody's got a copy of this regulation. It's FB-R, Facilities Planning and Growth Management. We took a round turn on this, and I think you guys have all been sent this once before, but this is sort of a vision, kind of a reset for the school division as a whole to, the idea is to closely monitor capacities. We've adjusted our capacities so that we can make ourselves eligible for proffers if and when those opportunities come up. So, we, kinda rambling here. A part of this regulation was to restructure the division so that your elementary schools were K through 5, and your middle schools were 6, 7, 8, and then your high schools were 9 through 12. So, that's a part of this regulation, and you guys can all read it on your own. But, this complements the capacity spreadsheet, the capital improvement plan that we submitted to you. So, this is all kind of synced up and in alignment, and I think that's what Mr. DiStefano's getting at here. I'll let Dr. Coleman talk specifically to the capacities, but if you look at this regulation, it gives some very specific action items, so when a school gets to a capacity, we start taking action and moving forward. And that, the rest of our meeting's gonna kinda focus on that.
And I think, Mr. DiStefano, I think Ms. Briggs and Gatz are going to speak a bit more to capacity in bullet 6.3.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay. And I didn't mean to shut you down, sir, I just, that wasn't my intent, it's just, all this stuff is certainly tied together.
I just wanted to make sure that I was understanding correctly that there isn't a need for a lot of repair work at Westside, but the proposal isn't just a one-for-one swap. I'm assuming, based on what you said, that it would also bring additional capacity to our education system?
Yes.
Okay.
And we'll, again, we'll get into those specifics.
All right, thank you.
Move on to the next one, sir?
If I, I think they, I just wanna make certain that we are providing a response to what's in the, in this section. I think there was a question about grant and funding opportunities as well. And please chime in, Dr. Coleman, Mrs. Gatz. To my knowledge, there are no current grant opportunities that I'm aware of. I think the last major grant opportunity we had was prior to my arrival, and that was a school construction grant in the amount of...
It was 2.8 initially, and then it dropped to 2.4.
And then the other section here, the other bullet, is legislative support from schools for the 1% sales tax. I have not heard any more, at least from my vantage as the superintendent regarding that. I'm not sure some of you elected leaders have knowledge about that in 6.1, section C here?
I mean, we plan on turning it in as part of our legislative priority this year. We're certainly in favor of the 1%, or the state allowing us to allow our citizens to vote on the 1% measure.
Yep, yep. Obviously, we'll have to go to referendum, so, but we are putting it back in there because of the value of drawing across a larger community.
Thank you. I just wanted to, we were speaking to every aspect of this.
Just last year, all 10 board members sitting here, we signed that joint resolution supporting that. I will say, the senators and delegates need to hear from you, so keep letting them know that you support that.
No question, sir. When I had an opportunity to speak with the elected leaders, absolutely shared my position, which is consistent with the position of both the Board of Supervisors as well as the school board. And I think, as Chair Marsh stated, both boards wrote a joint letter, it was last year or the year prior, supporting... year or the year prior, supporting that. So I think we're all consistent with the position that we support this being a referendum for our local community to the board.
Can we do it again?
Hundred percent. Okay.
Please.
Anybody object to that? I think, I think, I don't see anybody saying no. I think you'd get 10 signatures again.
Maybe you could send that video to the school when you send it.
Okay. We'll work on that then. All right. Let's move on, 6-2, site acquisition for future construction, I think.
6.2, site acquisition. I think County Administrator Robertson can speak to that.
Yeah. I'll just briefly note that there's been discussion of multiple sites throughout the county. I think to the degree that the boards collectively want to move forward, at whatever point you all kind of give the green light, then we can start to maybe pursue more serious conversations, either with property owners or consideration of various properties. But I would not want to get out ahead of your process, and certainly not put properties out there, because as soon as we name a property, you can imagine what's going to happen to the value of that property. And so, again, there have been any number of properties discussed, informally, all of which have pros and cons, all of which have potential considerations, either transportation-related impacts, soils impacts, space and configuration concerns. But again, once you all have a, at least a warm and fuzzy with us moving forward, we can start to have a little bit more serious conversations about those potential sites and narrow that list down.
Wasn't site selection, or at least a recommendation, part of the Tischler-Weiss study that's pending?
They are supposed to provide a recommendation. I suspect it'll be somewhere on the north end of the county. It's probably what it'll be limited to.
I'm just, just curious with that, and, you know, I'm assuming they're just recommending a general corridor or a general area as opposed to an actual parcel?
That's my understanding too, sir. Because I, I don't know that Tischler-Weiss knows or understands which properties are currently owned by the county, or, or even something that are an option for discussion. I don't know.
Yeah. I just wouldn't want anybody to walk out of the room thinking they're going to give us, like, I'm sorry. I wouldn't want anybody to walk out of the room thinking they're going to identify a specific parcel in their recommendation, because that wouldn't necessarily be, I think, what we're looking for.
No. And I think to your point, as soon as you identify that property, then it's inevitable.
Now, wouldn't we have to come up with some criteria for what we want that property to consist of? Because that might be something we might want to start looking at sooner rather than later, and that would give Mr. Robinson more time, once he's, once he's got what we want in the criteria. And I think both boards getting together and working that would probably be ideal.
Anything-
Are those type of discussions, I mean, as it goes forward, whether it's the school board or us collaborating or whatever, I would assume that would be a closed-door type discussion, Mr. Jones, because it's a negotiating-
See, coming up with a criteria for property, that's a open discussion, but to identify the criteria and how you're going to start, find a negotiate that issue.
But I guess my point is, at some point in time, there's a chance, based on what they give us, that we're looking for a piece of land that looks like this, has this kind of access, et cetera, so on. Doesn't take too many people, we've got pretty smart people in our county, to figure out, narrow it down to what acreage you either want to buy up and get ready to sell to the county, or get your pencil ready, right? So at some point in time, we just have to take that into consideration, which I think was Mr. Marsh's point.
Okay. So we'll have some further, because discussion's out, and we'll march forward smartly.
Yes.
Anything else on that agenda item? All right. Here and nothing, we'll move on to 6-3. Yes, sir.
Sure.
We don't have a, we never got a copy of an agenda.
Mr. Marsh was generous enough to share with me.
And if I may, when we have these meetings in the future, can we get the agenda at least a day or so before? Just so we're prepared to speak on some of these items. I know that we talk offline, et cetera, so we're kind of prepared, but at least we would know.
I'll, I'll take the hit for that. I, I beat on Dr. Kramer to make sure that they were aligned this time, so we had the same agenda.
Right.
And we posted it online, but-
Well, I mean, I just, you know, some of us, as you, we work other places and all, and it, it seems to have happened a few times, and I really appreciate y'all's patience on that.
Duly noted.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Akri will make certain that we're forthcoming with you.
All right. So 6-3 is updated school capacity report and the new division alignment regulation. So that's what I was kind of opening the door to earlier. Dr. Kramer, do you want to, you have something you want to speak on this?
I, our staff actually is prepared to share that. We have some updated information, and we'll speak to the policy and regulation as it pertains to that, which you have alluded to earlier. So with that, Ms. Briggs and Getz will lead this discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Kramer. My name is Lynn Briggs, for those of you that may not know me. And you should have received two handouts. The first one I want to address is the one with some colors on it that says subdivision yields and the potential impact on IDVCS. So this is one that is updated fairly regularly, and you'll even see down the bottom left, this was just revised Friday. So fairly regularly. We updated it with our current September 30th enrollment. But another change that we have made is in, in looking at our capacity numbers, Smithfield High School has been using a lot of space in Smithfield Middle. And as such, Smithfield Middle's capacity has been, or utilization has been very high. When in actuality, if Smithfield High's students were moved out of that space, Smithfield Middle has a significant amount of capacity. So going forward, that is how we're going to be identifying the utilization of Smithfield High and Smithfield Middle. So Smithfield High students are still in Smithfield Middle, but Smithfield Middle has capacity based on the classrooms there. However, that now tips Smithfield High as being over capacity, because based on their footprint, they are 20 classrooms short for their current capacity, as they are using 20 classrooms at Smithfield Middle. So there's a note on there, just so you're aware. We've also aligned the-
Ms. Briggs, can we, can we talk to that for just a second?
Yes, sir.
So I, and Dr. Kramer and I talked about this the other day, so that no one's caught off guard when they look at this. You'll see that Smithfield High is listed as being 104% at capacity. So that's always been the case, but it wasn't necessarily identified, or attention wasn't drawn to it because we were using classrooms from another school. So, and I don't want to get too far ahead of Ms. Briggs, but the point I'm trying to make is, this isn't something that happened overnight. We've adjusted how we're looking at capacities and using this regulation to kind of drive that, to identify issues that have been there for some time.
Let us go around this too.
Thank you. And back to you, Mel.
Yes, sir. Thank you. We also indicate the utilization percent. So we look at program capacity and the space that's available. Now, program capacity actually can change annually, because it's not just your, the amount of space you have between your walls in the classroom. It's what those walls are, are holding in. So at our elementary schools, you may actually see where program capacity has decreased from 24 to 25. Three of our elementary schools picked up a pre-K classroom. So if that classroom had been second grade last year, the capacity for that classroom might have been 24 students. Now, as a pre-K, it's 18. So you've decreased the program capacity when you've added some of those special programs. CTE classrooms, many of our CTE programs are capped at 20 per OSHA regulations. So even though that classroom could maybe hold 30 kids, it cannot hold more than 20 based on the program using that, that room. So we do have to go and update our program capacity annually, based on what programs we are providing that year. We have aligned this with the regulation, that's the other handout you received, to identify utilization percents at 75% or higher. And the little key at the bottom got cut off some, but that's in the regulation on page two that explains what the actions are when we hit 75, 85, or 90% utilization. Now, another thing that I think is very telling with this is if you look at the section that's under construction, this is not proposed, these are not developments that might happen. These are being built now. They are being built right now, under construction. And you can see what's going to happen to the, the projected utilization. They are going to start increasing any, even more with what's under construction. As you continue down the page, you now hit the approved ones, and we do know there are some approved ones that are still going through some, some possible revisions, some that have been sitting dormant for a while, and on down to proposed. This is a document that has been designed to help with our decision-making. This is not anything that I will say is, is written in stone, but certainly with developments under construction and based on student generation rates that we have, we are projecting that our, our schools at Hardy and Carrollton and Smithfield High are going to be over 90% capacity with what's happening now. So even though Westside is not over 90%, with a replacement building and aligning that K5, that school now can pull some students that are currently zoned Carrollton and currently zoned Hardy, because they were zoned Hardy to alleviate issues at Carrollton, but now Hardy's growing. So Westside will alleviate growth at the other two elementary schools. So while it's not itself right now up in the 90%, replacing that school will help alleviate the capacity issues we're having at the other two elementaries.
Ms., Ms. Briggs?
Yes, sir.
I think that's, that's a good spot to kind of go back and answer Mr. DiStefano's question about-
Yes.
-Westside and capacity. So if you look at Westside on the, on the spreadsheet, you'll see that the developments under construction, those numbers, we're going to pull Westside to a capacity of 88%. And if you reference our regulation on the back, or the bottom of the same spreadsheet, it says that when a school gets 85% capacity, a formal plan of action will be prepared by the planning committee. At 75%, we'll form a planning committee, evaluate needs, and recommend actions. And at 85%, a formal plan of action will be prepared by the planning committee, and the school board will review and may adjust priorities. And I think that ties into what Dr. Kramer's requesting of the school board on Thursday. He's going to ask the board to allow him to go ahead and start working with architects to get some initial pricings for a new Westside, all based off of capacity.
And may I add?
Please.
Just to, just to be clear, the Westside replacement is not replacing it as is a four, five, six school.
That's right.
It is our recommendation that it is a pre-K through five elementary school to replace Westside.
Right. And again, in accordance with our, the bottom, our guiding principles of regulation. So none of this will happen overnight. I think everybody understands that. But again, this is a, a tool to help planning and decision-making, rather than let it get out of control.
So that, if I may, that's down in number four, the third elementary school grades, you have K through five, but it's actually going to be pre-K through five, correct?
It would be a pre-K through five school, yes.
Yes.
In the pre-K, that, that supply changes year after year as well?
Yes. Give or take. I mean, the, the thing that really impacts us, our special education programs, that does fluctuate every single year. So that does have an impact, yes.
And then, if, if memory serves correctly, how you folks decide, how, the, the reasoning for how you decide how many pre-K classes to take in a given school is, again, based off space available. And I do recall someone saying last year, year before, if we had the space, we could offer up several pre-K classes. So we're, there's limitations in that, based off space.
There are. And when you look at some of our self-contained special education classes, you're capped at eight, eight students. So that's, that could be a classroom space. Sometimes there's a lot of equipment that goes with those, so it could be a, a full-size classroom space with a small amount of kids, depending on what the program is.
That, if I may, that's exactly, you're answering part of the question that I wanted to ask, you brought it up, is, you can't really see it just in straight data, but how is special needs and with students affecting the classroom, not just simply cast capacity, but the number of classrooms that you're going to need? And then another additional question with that would be, there's been a shift for many individuals for different reasons, where some are going more to private schools or homeschooling. And what kind of impact are you at least trying to forecast in regards to that and growth? Because not necessarily all the new housing and families that they're estimating will necessarily go into public schools.
Yes. You're absolutely correct. And, and I would say, you know, when you bring, when you build a new school, they typically come. We saw it at Hardy, we saw it at Georgie Tyler. We have lost students in Westside over the years, 100, 150 kids. What we hear is parents say all the time, "I'm not putting my child in Westside." And why? Because of the video we just saw. And so we will lose kids during Westside years, but then they will come back. So we'll have them early on, Hardy, Carrollton, they leave, they come back. So we do anticipate that, you know, we have to be ready for those children to return from homeschool, private school, or whatever, when a new school is built. And as for the special education programs, our special education population is growing. Every year, it is growing. And it's growing in particular in those needs that are, are more significant needs. So, you know, children who require, require more significant programming, smaller classrooms, and so that does impact our capacities in a, in a very real way. And so every year when we talk about, well, our capacity has decreased, well, that's because this year, at three elementary schools, we added three new special education programs. So that went from a normal-sized classroom down to eight students in a classroom. And we have to look at that every single year. We must have a good reputation when it comes to special education, because they are coming.
Thank you. Any other comments on this topic? I, I just give a shout out to Ms. Briggs. I know she's worked tirelessly on her spreadsheet. That takes us to 6-4, 10-year CIP.
What you see now is a layout of the five to 10-year CIP. This is the same CIP that the school board voted on, ranked, and had all of the comments also. But at this time, what we did was take it and put it into the format that the board of supervisors normally see. So it's more stretched out, we just make it, just make it larger, C portion of it. So as you can see, this is just some of the five here. And based off of the school board ranking, once again, we went from those areas that were ranked higher to the, to the 25, 26-year, and then moving on to the 26, 27, and so on, and so on. On the left-hand side, what I have there is what could, could be considered a proffer. This is just- This is just an overall look of what could be a proffer. Now, I understand the terminology of proffer is one of those that you need to be very exact at. So a couple of options, a couple of areas that could be based into a proffer would be, of course, new Westside Elementary School, just based off the fact of the expansion. The same thing with the line-nine Smithville High School, major renovation and expansion. Division-wide bathrooms was one thing that I had to research, had to see if that was. And if the planned bathroom repairs do expand capacity, then it could be considered for that. If you can move down, Mr. Cooper. Next is parking lot repairs. I found that in excess of existing capacity, once again, if the parking lots are expanding based off of capacity, it could be considered. And the last one, will be new practice fields. And that, once again, must satisfy the same test and show that existing fields do not have the capacity for those areas. So those are the areas that I could pinpoint for, could be, and I'm not saying definite, but could be, considered for a proffer. But other than that, I couldn't really find anything else that could fit right into that mold for proffers off of this five-to-ten-year CIP.
So, not to circle back, but I guess I will, to the Westside Elementary, fifty million, where did that number come from?
The number actually came from looking at the Board of Supervisors layout at a proposed, just one way.
Well, the reason why I say is, Culpeper Elementary in Chesapeake, I think they're either finishing up or just finished, I don't know where they are, that process, is sixty-one million. And the capacity on that is nine-hundred-and-forty, nine-hundred-and-sixty students.
Okay.
What are we looking at for capacity on this?
Thousand.
We're looking at a thousand.
So sixty-one million, and that's what they're paying, just paid for. Give this two or three more years, and fifty's going to be way off the mark.
Fifty is the amount, twenty-five is twenty-five is the amount that's in our current CIP.
Right. No, I just...
Yeah, and just for the record, the columns, I believe the dates are wrong, right? So I believe we're at twenty-five, twenty-six now, twenty-six, twenty-seven would be...
I apologize. That is correct. Twenty-five, twenty-five.
So, I, just so that I can wrap my head around what you've put together here, you've formatted this to mirror what the Board of Supervisors use, and Mr. DiStefano's educated me, and I think via code, in order for any of this to be eligible, it has to be documented on a five-year SIP. So if these items are listed past five years, I think that makes them ineligible. Is that, what do you say, Mr.?
I'd defer to Mr. Jones.
It gets a little hairy there.
The reason being is, the numbers in the CIP are so you can base your proffer amount. If somebody wants to, they put your, they put Westside over capacity by ten students, you have to say, well, your proffers for those ten students for the capital improvements are X. Well, there has to be a number, that's an actual number to base that on, so within that five year, because that ten-year number is really not an accurate number. So you use fifty million dollars or whatever the reasonable estimate is for a school, and then divide it and come up with, that is the proffer amount per student, per seat for that capital improvement.
Thank you. So I think the dates that we plugged in there, Dr. Coleman plugged in there, I think they're rather erroneous. They're just based off how the school board ranked it.
Right. I mean, I think that's, that is an exercise that needs to take place. If y'all have agreed that these are your, these are your priorities, and the Board of Supervisors, when they're creating their CIP, agree that these are their priorities because there are other things that the county needs to do as well, but if it's one of their priorities and they put Westside in year two, a real number needs to be generated, and that's, that's something that we do on all the things, a fire truck or anything else.
Makes sense.
Mr. Jones, why have you, I have one question too.
Yes, sir.
On the discussion of, you know, which one potentially could be proffer eligible or not, I'm assuming that the school, if it's from a school perspective, however, there's also proffer regulation involving public transportation and facilities that support public transportation. And so fleet support is a form of public transportation facility, would, do we think that could potentially be included?
I think it probably could be, but again, we'll need to look at the, very specifically about what is increased capacity on some of these things and others. Ounce for the front bus loop, that's clearly not increasing capacity for the school. That's not, that's not allowing more students. That's just a, from a, from a proffer standpoint, that's just a repair. It's got to, for the school facilities, it's got to increase capacity. And again, as you said, if there's not enough capacity for athletics, then that's, that's something that we can have, and we can certainly, I mean, I can talk with the school board attorney and go through the process of trying to get on the same page.
With respect to the, you know, the priority and the CIP, I think one of them, which is my view on this, is one of the more important things are, if there is a need for something that it appear on the CIP, knowing that some things will get cut based on budget constraints in a budget year. But using the band room as an example, that became very easy to approve during the last budget because it was proffer eligible. And I'm not sure that it would have been as easy to do had it not been an applicable proffer for that. So the point I'm making is that it would be in our account, and that's interesting in my opinion, to put all of the needs onto the CIP, and those that are not, you know, approved because of constraints get removed or rescheduled during the budget year.
So simply put, if it's not listed on the CIP, you're potentially missing an opportunity.
That's right.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Chair, if I may also highlight a point, Mr. Akri made, these were estimates that were given in the past, many are already obsolete, and these projections are probably pretty far off. Again, these may have been given a year ago, two years ago. Costs have escalated significantly, so stating this for not just people in the room, but for the public, these numbers, to your point, Mr. Akri, may have gone up significantly, likely have gone up significantly. So I think it's important for us to not look at these, since these were the actual cost. They may have been the actual cost a year ago, two years ago, but that sixty could be seventy, seventy-five. Who knows what it could be?
But I guess the question is, what does the Board of Supervisors need from the school board to make this something that you can use to benefit the taxpayers? What do you need from us? I guess that's the question.
I feel like you've done it, right? So you've taken your needs, and I appreciate the consistency year to year, right? So this is my second year on the board, and I think it's been good that you took the projects, you didn't waver from that. We didn't see big blips between one year and the next. You just simply took and, you know, renumbered the things that you didn't get and said, okay, what's the, what's the priority of the next year? So I think you've done those things. I do think the closer that we can get, obviously, because what we have to do is, we had a strategic planning retreat today, that's going to drive the five-year CIP and, you know, the ensuing next year's budget, et cetera. But the closer we get to actually having to pay for these things, we have to have real numbers. So I think the work doesn't stop when it comes to putting pencil to paper and making sure that we know that fifty is really sixty-three million or whatever the number is. But I think we have to continue, Dr. Coleman, to refine, I know you love this stuff, but just continue to refine the process so that we can be accurate with our five-year CIP.
And one other thing, Dr. Kramer, because I might have missed it, you talked about a grant previously for one of the school construction. Could you tell me more about that and if you could see the new Westside being eligible for a similar type grant?
The grant I mentioned actually predated me. I will ask Dr. Coleman, is the school construction grant that I think each county received an allocation?
Yes, sir. Each county received the allocation, and I don't know what the metrics was based on, how those funds was divided up per county. I just know how much Alawite received, and I know that it was decreased right before the funds was given out.
And what was that?
It started off at maybe two-point-eight, and then it decreased down to two-point-three.
What was it, what year was it? Was it twenty-one, twenty-two, or twenty-two, twenty-three? I think it was, as I recall, it was just prior to my arrival that we received that school construction grant. But I'm not aware of any other grant opportunities that might contribute to the Westside project, but that was on the agenda. I just wanted to speak to it early. So I'm not aware of any dollars that are out there that we may be able to apply for. Periodically, they do share some grant opportunities, but at this time, I'm not aware of one that we can apply for.
And I think that grant, if I remember correctly, spoke to infrastructure, tied to musical construction.
That is correct. That was correct.
Now, about two years ago, there was a loan program for construction from the state. We had talked about it, Dr. Coleman and I, somebody from the state had told me about it.
Yes.
And, you know, it was a low-interest loan, and they were turning some of those into grants. I don't know, have we ever looked into that?
Yeah.
And is it still available?
I know that we talked about it, and I don't want to just fire off, I think it was the, it was through a laboratory grant or something of that nature?
No, it was a school construction grant that Governor Youngkin put in place right when he came in.
I would have to, I would have to research my notes, Mr. Coleman.
If you would, because the person I talked to up in Richmond told me they were forgiven some of those loans, turning them into grants.
Okay, okay.
So I don't know if it's still in effect. If it is, it's something we would definitely want to look at.
And I will say, often, many of those grants have restrictions and criteria that we do not meet. Sometimes they are tied to local composite index, and ours is often higher than many other counties and jurisdictions around the state. So often, we've applied for grants that we don't qualify for because our local composite index is sometimes too high. But if, certainly, to your point, Mr. Coleman, if there are some grant opportunities that are out there, we will certainly see those.
Yeah, and this was a loan, but when this person had called me and, you know, was informing me about it, nobody in the state had applied for it yet. You know, so I don't think it would have been that, no, Alawite, you know, your index is too high. It would have been, thank God, somebody's finally applying for it. So I think it's something we definitely want to look at, see if it's still available, and if we can.
I'm not sure about that, but it's certainly something we could inquire.
I think that Ms. Briggs and Ms. Getz stumbled across something that we could discuss, Mr. Coleman. I think this is exactly what you're speaking of, SCAP, Grand Scap, correct?
That sounds right.
Something that they discovered. We can look more into it and look at where we left off at, so we can pick it back up.
Thank you.
One other point here, and I don't know if this has been considered previously or not, but there's a lot of items on the capital improvement, a lot of them are large expenditures. And so any help with those, you know, would be appreciated. And one of the thing that I've considered, curious if the school has, is sponsorships of like activity fields and things like that. Coming up from Texas, I mean, it was pretty common to see Friday Night Lights having, you know, whatever branding on the field, and they're taking financially, you know, paying for those nice fields. That might be an opportunity available, I'm just curious if that's been considered.
I think...
There's a whole policy for that.
Yes, it is.
Having been a member of the Smithville High School Parents Booster Club, it's not as simple as it is in Texas to receive money from businesses to sponsor Virginia High School Sports. VHSL has very specific rules and regulations. It took us working very, very hard together over a year and a half to get a new scoreboard, and way longer than it should have to get, to allow Hercules Fence to even help sponsor a swinging door on a fence that they wanted to give to us. It's complex, and Virginia has made it that way.
Okay. I think Smithfield, Smithfield has been, Smithfield Foods has been very generous. I think last year, year before, they gave, they donated a thirty-thousand-dollar scoreboard.
That's what Mrs. Roundtree's speaking.
Yes, they did. I went to Smithfield Foods as part of the Booster Club, and we got that donation. It took a year and a half to get it done.
And then, you know, Windsor doesn't have a Smithfield Foods, but some of the local businesses have done quite a bit to sponsors on a smaller scale, but El Rodeo's done quite a bit for the kids over there at Windsor High. Windsor Hardware is always helping out the farm lab. It's just not the scale to Smithfield Foods.
Well, to the OBCE Foundation's credit, they gave us actually a larger amount than that. They gave us fifty thousand for the tennis courts for Windsor, so certainly would like to acknowledge them for that contribution.
For sure.
Yeah.
So while we're all here, and I'm going to ask if staff maybe can look into this. So first of all, I'd like to thank the school board and its staff for taking care of getting everything in line for us, the books and stuff. You know, we talked about credit ratings. Our current rating is a double-A plus. When you start to go borrow or looking at bonding or getting a bond for a school that's going to cost as much as maybe seventy million dollars, that's what really matters. I guess I mentioned to our county administrator, but I'm not sure of anything else, but I think we owe it to our citizens to show what debt services we're carrying for schools. Obviously, Hardy is on that. Debt service for the CTE program, that was originally nine million dollars. We actually went out for a bank loan in lieu of a bond for that, and we moved from the joint effort or collaboration with Suffolk to bring it in-house. But I guess at the end of the day, when we were prepared to do a tax increase, when we got ready to do Hardy, we were fortunate that at the time, rates and stuff allowed us to realign some debts, some debt, if you will, and so we didn't have to increase our taxes to the rate we thought. I guess the reason I bring that up here is that we're all kind of aware, maybe even looking forward to seeing, as taxpayers, because we all are, what debt services we're carrying as a county for projects and things for the schools. And because a lot of times, people see the operating number at the end of the budget, but that debt services also needs to be kind of peeled off a little bit so we can see this because, obviously, a new school will add to that. And again, there's nothing really there other than just to say, I think that would be in our best interest to know what that looks like.
Just for, to relate that to my own house, I'm not going to go buy a new house before I pay off, or I'm not going to go buy a new car before my car's paid off. I think that's what you're getting at, right?
Well, I mean, and as you know, with bonding, it's a different situation, but I think your point is being good stewards.
Right.
It's just good to know where we are and where we'll be. And so we educate our public too, because sometimes the public just would think, you would, as much money the county has, it most definitely paid cash for it, I don't know, it varies. But anyway, I just thought I'd bring that up. Would you mind, would you be able to give us that when you get an opportunity and show where we are in debt services for that?
Yeah, we talked about that last night in the Audit Committee meeting a little bit. I think as our new Director of Finance, kind of getting his feet on the ground, he did assure us that our debt service percentage is, you know, well under what our policy is set at. So I think it'll be easier for Mr. Robertson to pull this.
That's good stuff. All right, we want to move on to the last item? I think that's a good transition point. Dr. Kramer, do you want to lead that one?
Sure. I think Mrs. Roundtree and Mrs. Devery have had a chance to speak, and our CFO and I had a conversation with County Administrator Robertson yesterday as well. And Mrs. Devery provides an update monthly. We'll be providing an update to our board on this Thursday, but she shared with me it's a bit too early to look at what potential surpluses and vacancies we'll have. We're still hiring. And so we're very early on into the school year, so it's really early for us to sort of project where those savings and surpluses will be. That's something we'll get a better gauge as we get into the year, and we'll certainly provide that. I think we did share at the previous board meeting, we entered the fiscal year with, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but somewhere in the neighborhood of two-point-two million dollar surplus. And we're able to move quite a few of those funds over into the health reserve because of the increase in health costs. We actually had to go into our reserves last year, so we've actually shored that up with some of those savings. But we'll be sharing additional information in the coming months when we, again, get a better gauge on where we are in terms of staffing and savings.
Yeah, I think just one point to note, again, Mr. Devery was at the Audit Committee meeting yesterday, so we had a chance... meeting yesterday, so we had a chance to talk about it. And I know she couldn't make it this evening, but, you know, last year, when we had this joint meeting, we, I think, began to talk in earnest about how the schools are on self-funded health insurance. That means that the premiums are a lot higher for all the school employees than other county employees, and perhaps what is really, you know, a good level in the market of affordability. It also means, you know, according to Mrs. Devery, and we were chatting a bit about plans, having been, you know, background in healthcare, I understand that. Certainly, when I say it, you'll be like, oh, yeah, that's bad. It's almost like a high deductible plan that the school employees are on. So they have a very high amount out of pocket before the insurance, I mean, so they pay a lot more, and then they have a very, very high amount out of pocket before they're able to start to take advantage of that insurance they've paid more for. So I know, again, last October, almost to the day of when we met last year together, we began talking about switching the schools over from a self-insured or self-funded plan to a sponsored plan, like Local Choice, that the county team members are on, et cetera. Mrs. Devery told me last evening that they're going to bid for, you know, different carriers, and she's hopeful that that change can be made a reality by the '26, '27 budget. So July 1st of 2026, which would be a huge win. Again, it's hard to underscore how much it means to retirees to be able to purchase health insurance that's a good plan, you know, and things like that. So I know they're working really hard. Part of that is to have enough in reserves, which last year, when we talked about it, didn't have a whole lot of reserves to make this change. And I think what was indicated last year, at least, was that the consultant that they have indicated, I know I'm saying a lot of words, but bottom line is, you've got to have about $4 million, right, in the account so that you can feel comfortable making the change. Because basically, you have to cover those claims. You switch to whatever your carrier is, you have to cover the claims for a period of time on the self-insured side until you can switch to the carrier, the new term or carrier. So with the surplus from '25, '26, in addition to giving some back to county, paying for some unanticipated utility costs, all the things that you did with that money for operations, I understand about $2 million was placed into that fund to help cover up to the $4 million of what it's going to take to switch. Again, long story long, just working on it hard.
She is, and she may, she may want to wring my neck for saying it out loud, but on Thursday's meeting, it's already hanging on the agenda, our healthcare fund, our current cash balance as of September 30th is 2.1 million. This time last year was 780,000. So that puts it into perspective of what we were able to do with that surplus. It's a much better spot to be in than we were last year.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and then, if I could, just to have this open discussion and transparent discussion about the budget for '26, '27, I think it is important, you know, when I think about a budget, you all know this because I said it last year, I very much think about a budget with capital, right, which we just spent quite a bit of time talking on, F T E budget, and then operations. And I think we've been doing a much better job with the operational part. I think you guys do a great job managing the F T E part. But what I kind of wanted to get out of this section, at least as it stands, is what are the big rocks in the road, right? So what do you all, the school board, see? I know you don't, you're still hiring people, so you don't really know, but, you know, surely, like last October, you had an idea of, hey, yeah, we think we want to add this program, or we think this is going to change. So what grants are expiring, what major things can we expect to see, both from an F T E perspective and an operational perspective that you're already starting to turn in your mind about, just so that we can have that open discussion tonight? That's what I had intended. And again, we've had a long discussion about C I P. I kind of wanted to just hear, all right, so what's next with F T Es and operations?
I think the easy answer, because the school board voted to do a compensation study, is to look at salaries across the board. I think that's going to be a rock in the road. You know, Dr. Kramer and staff have beat the drum relentlessly that teachers often go down the road to make a little bit more money. And there's certainly a trade-off there. I mean, Alawite County Schools is an appealing place to be employed, but everybody's got a dollar amount, right? At some point, we'll start losing people, and I think we saw it this year. You're going to start losing good people because they can go down the road, maybe to a less desirable place to work, but pour more money in their bank account. In my opinion, I think this compensation study is going to tell us what we already know. Probably need to tighten up a little bit. How much? That's to be determined.
I think you're spot on, Mr. Chair. I don't think there's anything more pressing than that, and that's salary relative to neighboring jurisdictions. We are conducting a compensation study that is currently underway. We should have the results of that later this calendar year, so we're thinking December. So that will be informative as we engage in budget discussions. But I don't think that there's anything more important than that for our county. For the first time since I've been here, we have lost people because of salary, and they've stated as much. I've actually forwarded some of those emails to board members here, and we have people who are leaving us because of salaries. I think there was one week, and Miss Getz, you actually provided this information at one of the board meetings. There was one week where we offered 10 jobs, and these were 10 people who actually applied to our county. Eight of those 10, once they realized what their salary would be, eight of 10 decided to not accept the position and decided to go elsewhere. So I think it's going to be incumbent upon us. I think it's, it moves us to take a serious look at our salary. And again, we'll have some tangible information from the compensation study to help direct that discussion.
Can you make sure with the compensation study and the output, that it includes some kind of recommendation on step program? Because remember, that was a huge discussion as, you know, as we get closer to budget, like, when did we start step? When did we stop it? When did we hold it? When did we pause it? When did we put it back? So, you know, just whatever the overall compensation study picture is, if included in that could be a recommendation for step, no step, percentage increase, you know, however you're going to get there to the number, that would be really helpful to have that as early as possible. Because I did feel a bit frenetic at the end of that budget process. I don't think it should come down, you know, public hearing, citizens save what they want and advocate for themselves, and I appreciate that. It just, it shouldn't be like a last-minute discussion. It should be part of our philosophy, I think, and our compensation strategy.
And this is the first time, Ms. Briggs and Miss Getz, you can help me out. You've been a lot longer than me. We've not conducted a compensation study in roughly, how many years? 2006?
Oh, wow.
And this is not unusual, not to conduct one in 20 years, but not unusual to actually conduct a compensation study. I think a number of our neighboring districts, Patosin, Williamsburg, Portsmouth, I think, just recently conducted compensation studies. And as I recall, most of those districts gave fairly significant raises based upon that information. So I've had some preliminary conversations with certainly our board, Mr. Robertson, that looking at where we are. And we've slipped over the years in terms of pay relative to neighboring jurisdictions. I suspect that the compensation study is going to come back and state that we're going to need to offer a fairly significant raise to some of the employee groups. I can't tell you which ones, because, for example, bus drivers might be, might be, possibly. So hopefully, if you're a bus driver listening to that saying, so as an example, bus drivers might be compensated fairly well relative to our neighboring jurisdiction, whereas our teachers may not be, or vice versa. So once we get that back, we'll look at the different employee groups, and we'll offer a recommendation.
I think y'all are spot on. You know, when, the last budget session, I guess we had with you guys, somebody gave us a list of salaries, and the teachers, when I looked down the list of teachers, I identified one that has a master's degree, making $51,000 or $52,000 a year. And when you look in neighboring jurisdictions where they may have a profession that is simply a high school graduate with a certificate and is making, starting off at $58,000, and are looking at a $14,000 raise once they get an additional certification, that's troublesome, and I'm glad that y'all identified that. You said in the pay study, and I was going to ask that question. I'm glad you're spot on, but I want to reemphasize, it's looking at every position. It's not a blanket thing where it throws, you know, a percentage over the entire everybody, because there's some of us that are fortunate in government, that we make a comfortable salary, but the ones that are really, where the rubber meets the road and make the really big difference, we all feel deserve and need that extra money just to survive. So we're obviously going to be, just so that y'all probably figured it out, we're going to be dealing with the same issue at the county level, whether it's our first responders, our people in utilities, et cetera. It's very competitive, and it's not going to get any easier. And we're competing with, although we're not, with the tax base. We're competing with the Virginia Beaches and Chesapeake, et cetera, that their pockets just right now seem a lot deeper than ours. So I'm glad that y'all bring that up. I'm looking forward to that. I am, I do think about, heard a board member say a few months back, said, be careful with the pay study, because you've got to be willing to pay the bill when it comes up, because if you don't come up to the table willing to pay, it'll have the reverse effect and make you, make that slippery slope even quicker to slide down. So I'm looking forward to seeing that, and hopefully, we can work together to make sure that that compensation happens.
I think a lot of it was initiated because the board had some pretty spirited debate over different groups within the pay scale, like who deserved a pay raise and who didn't. And then I think the compensation study is, I hope that identifies a lot of that, mitigates some of that debate. What else? What other rocks in the road we got?
Well, we do have the security personnel. As we put in the weapons detection system, so we will be requesting all of the schools have the security personnel. So I, I'm probably going to request next year's budget include the ones for the elementary schools. Even though we may not have the weapons detection system in there, there's no reason why we can't have that security for our elementary schools as well. And that's going to be a little bit additional, but I think that's the only thing I know of.
I hate to put the cart before the horse, but I will, I will share that I have an appointment on Thursday with Senator Jordan, and I have prepared a little small presentation, basically talking about funding S R Os, the fact that four of our S R Os are funded via grants due to expire in June of '26. Those other five S R Os come out of the Sheriff's Department budget, and those are somewhere in a ballpark of $100,000 apiece, so that's not chump change. And then, as Mrs. Perkins alluded to, the S S Os. The purpose of sitting down with Senator Jordan is to show her that we've got all these expenses that are related to safety and security. While they're not mandated, they're not S O Q funded positions. They're certainly necessary. And I think it'd be hard pressed to argue that those positions aren't necessary, but they got to be paid from some source of money, right? So that's the conundrum we're in here in Alawite.
And when you're bending her ear, the comp board positions that are deputies, a lot of times, help with some of the deputy positions. We've got a hospital that's going to require more law enforcement support, because obviously, when you have people that are dealing with issues, they have to sit with them until a bed comes open, et cetera. So we're going to have to increase F T Es for the Sheriff's Department. So when you bend her ear, she knows there's a hospital coming, because she was part of it. We need some help with those comp positions. Actually, we need comp positions, additional ones actually being funded, not just the ones they identify. And we need a pay increase on the comp positions that actually come close to a salary that will recruit people to come and work in Alawite County. So if you could add that to your, I really appreciate it. I'll say the same thing when I get a chance to talk to her. Thank you.
So my plan is, once I sit down with her, kind of gauge her reaction, and basically get some, some thoughts and guidance from her, then I was going to polish it up and send it to both boards and say, this is what I'm asking. So, good stuff.
There had been some discussion, I think, in terms of your weapons detection system and everything, and looking at, I think, contracting personnel. Do you want to mention that, where you're at in that conversation, what you're thinking is, who they're replacing? How's that fit into your budget?
So I think you're speaking, I think you're speaking to the additional S S Os we are looking at for high schools as well as our middle schools, because we purchased weapons detection systems for the two middle schools. As our board has stated, with those weapons detection systems, you unfortunately have to have personnel as well. So we have looked at our budget to try to find some funds for the current year to support some additional personnel. We are in discussion with one of the larger security firms in the country, actually, who supplies schools and some private industry as well. So those conversations are being had, and we are looking at our budget to see how we can support that for the current fiscal year. So we, hopefully, we'll have some additional information to share with both our board, as well as the community and the Board of Supervisors in the coming weeks. So that's where we are.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, I was going to ask this Chairman Marsh about the Tischler-Weiss study and when we can expect, I know Director Ring is here as well, but when we can expect a combined report from both of our engagements?
I'm going to flick that back to Dr. Coleman.
Yeah, I'll look at my team over here, actually, all four of them over there, because they've been in constant contact with, with Tischler-Weiss. They've been having ongoing meetings. So would you share with us sort of a status report as to where we are with Tischler-Weiss? Any one of you over there?
All right. Overall, just want to make sure that we're on the same page. Are you asking about, because there's two of them going on, the counties and the schools. All right. So near the end of this month, the school is supposed to be completed. I do not know about the county's version of it, or what's going on with the county's version of it at this time. So I don't want to speak about the county's version, but the school is supposed to be completed by the end of the month.
When you see him, tell me I asked you also about it.
Definitely will.
As Roundtree has.
I definitely will.
But we have County Administrator Robertson and Ms. Ring. Do you have an update for the county's portion of the Tischler-Weiss study?
So the county's study is pretty much complete, and it was, a concern was raised that the county study, which was started earlier, needed to be consistent with the school study, which started a little bit later. So our, their team is basically finishing up, as I understand it, with the school study, and then they'll kind of massage our study, the county study, to make sure that they're consistent with one another.
And we've been having a meeting every Wednesday just to keep everyone updated on the same page, and Ms. Ring is a part of that meeting. So we'd be happy to ask them tomorrow.
Thank you.
So just to be, just to be clear, as of this moment, they have not given us a date?
No, have not received the date at this time. But the general vicinity was the end of the, end of October.
Right. Okay.
Wasn't it originally end of July that the study was due?
I do think the football's been kicked.
I'm sorry?
I do think that football got kicked.
Just curious.
Any other questions, board members? Any other issues to be raised?
I'll just, I want to say it again. I'm glad that we're here tonight. The stuff that we've talked about tonight has been an effort for some time now, and I think we're finally getting to a point where we're all starting to gel, and I think that's a good spot to be. So I appreciate everybody coming out tonight. Questions are good. Different ideas and perspectives are always good, so I think we're in a good spot.
Mr. Chairman, it is our privilege, and we really do appreciate the opportunity to collaborate. I think being informed erases a lot of questions sometimes, and it helps us to move forward together when we are questioning or wondering, and then all of a sudden, we get things last minute and makes it difficult. So this is a great step forward, I think, for both of our boards working together. So thank you. Thank you very much. And with that, our Board Supervisors will adjourn, as will the school board.